Motion to agree convening on favor?
Just go ahead.
All right, so we're on number six. Bylaw and policy, and we'll turn the time over to Jeff on this one.
So, public participation policy. Really, I can keep this quite concise, because Councilor Court says we now have a challenge to get out of here in good time. The regulation requires that you have one. You actually have most of the pieces of one. You already have a public presentation to council policy, you have a communications policy, you have an agency's boards committee policy. What I put in your background was there's a variety of ways municipalities are approaching these. Some of them are really extensive. They're saying that now every time something comes to council, you need to write a public participation plan with every item that comes to council. That makes me a little nervous, but... And then you see other, like the Cardston County that said, "You know what? For right now, we're just going to get compliant. We're just going to write a policy that makes us compliant today, and then we'll adapt this as we go along." So, we need to get that in front of you, actually, probably next meeting for kind of the first look at it. My question is, is how extensive do you want us to get? My recommendation is we do one that is compliant, and we reference our other policies that are in place already. So I just wanted to make sure that was okay before we brought you a draft. Otherwise, and we can, as soon as it's compliant, we can set about making it as robust as we'd like. But we need to be compliant by the end of July. So, and it won't take us, honestly, 15 minutes to draft up something to be compliant. That's not difficult. So I just wanted a little feedback on that, what thoughts were, and then we'll bring a draft back next meeting.
Okay. How do we feel, Mayor?
My thought, let's be compliant. And put the details as we move along.
Counselor Drew?
I feel the same way.
We'll bring you one next Tuesday.
Do we need a...
No, it's good. We'll bring you something next Tuesday.
Good, okay then. So we'll move on to other business. So council orientation and training information. Are there any things that you need clarified here on this?
Yeah, my intent there was we've kind of gone through the curriculum as prescribed, but surely, in my head, there's some things you've been sitting around saying, "When are we going to talk about that? When am I going to understand that better?" You know, I just don't want to leave something out, even if it's not prescribed. I want to be able to bring it back and do some training. So, of course, anywhere along this little four-year road, let's have that conversation. I just don't want you to think that, "Oh, the window for orientation is closed."
Can we dedicate that time of our planning session to maybe...
Well, I'm just saying, has there anything been on your mind that's just really bugging you that we can...
We had an orientation.
Yeah, no, you're good. You're good. They're just in the act now. There's a curriculum of items that I have to make sure you've had the chance to be oriented on.
So this is what I was wondering. When we did the George Cuff review, didn't we cover most of those items there in Clare's home?
Covered a lot of them generally, and then I tried to get them specifically. You know, relative to Cardston.
So if there's anything you feel that we need to do...
No, I don't have anything off the top of my head. I just didn't want anyone sitting around saying, "Man, when's this guy going to get to that?" So if there isn't any of that, great.
No, I think we... How's everybody else feel about the orientation we had? I think that that was...
The weather sucked.
It was good, I felt.
Well, you know, we've just done lots of budget discussion. We've done a lot of that since then, so...
It's all parcel, right?
So good. If you're good, that's it.
All right, all right, we'll move on. Planning session 2018. There's some items in here that Jeff put in here that we might consider when we do have our planning session. Is there anything that you can think of that you've looked over that... I know Counselor Bankery brought up an item here. I'm trying to remember what it was, at the beginning of the meeting, that you thought we should talk about at the planning session.
Well...
Go ahead, Mayor.
I'm just wondering, Jeff, regarding the parks and rec, master plan and public participation in that idea of development. We heard they used today, but I think we also need to have more interaction with the public to get a little bit of a better sense of what they really, truly want. We have that need for the project, the larger project, that should be part of that conversation. And I'm not really understanding how we are getting those two ideas together.
Are you talking about a survey, or a...
You know, the parks and rec master plan. The project that Dr. Clark...
And Gibbs Schaefer of Old Port.
Wanted to have...
Spray Park from the last hour.
And that's why I had a list of, here's a bunch of big stuff that's come up in the last year.
And I'm trying to understand, because sooner or later, we need to have a center priority. Because the budget is only so big and so wide, and we heard today another proposal for another $4.5 million in the next three years. So I'm trying to figure out how to look at all that. You know, the rest of the $1,000,000 tax credit for a year. And I need to... I need to...
Counsel, we have some discussion about this that we heard from Trail, right?
I hate to see it come out and then just spin, nothing going. We need to decide what's priority and move forward.
That's what I think, I think. Unless we start to prioritize and decide where we're going to put them in.
Sorry, I got a question giving, not really deals, but it's... We put aside money for different things. We talk about it in our planning, and then the money doesn't get used for that for years. I guess, whatever reason, it doesn't move. What happens to that money? Do we build onto it? Or does it just keep spinning out and say, "Well, I can't do it this year," and it spins to the next year?
Oh, I see. It depends. So you'll see two things happen. Let's say, let's just take a small project. I don't know where it would be. I'll grab something of line painting, I don't know, let's say. And for one reason or another, we didn't do 15,000. With a line painting, we budgeted for it. We'll do one of two things. Usually, we take this to, well, we would always take it to council. One is we'll simply use the previous year's unspent money to fund the next year, so we don't tax for it twice. So that's usually the first step. It's to say, "Okay, do we actually need to do 30,000, or do we just do the 15,000 again?" Actually, line painting at the airport's a good one, example of that, because we don't do it anymore. And actually, it's sometimes, I think, two years ago it was in the budget, and the airport club said, "Actually, it doesn't need done." So all we did is budget the next year and use that money to fund it. So we only taxed once. However, we've got other ones where we've said... And our best example of that is crushing the cement and asphalt, where we budget 40,000 a year, but we let that, we let the money accumulate, actually, the same as we let the cement and asphalt accumulate, and when it hits a certain mass, we bring them in. But we increase that every year. So it's 40,000 this year, it's 80,000 next year, it's 120,000, then we spend it.
Okay.
So it's...
To me as a best, this is not a good question, but there's some projects that seem like they're just getting put aside year after year after year after year after year. Which ones, specific? There's some recreation things that should have been done a while back. We just want to see how to get to them.
The money's there.
But the money's there.
But it's like...
But I'm just not sure why, if we don't have the time to build a wire, do you contract right out there? Maybe the dugouts are a good example.
Right, yeah. So dugouts have come in and out, because there was an initial amount, and then all the quotes were, "We don't have enough," so we pulled it and reserved it. And you're right, then it hasn't been back on until we fund it. So it kind of came out, and it's just been sitting on the outside looking in for a while.
Yeah, so something like a shale that's been sitting around for a bit. Now we've got some money in the budget for it that doesn't get used. Will it get done next year?
Well, I don't, I'm not sure why it wouldn't be done this year.
Again, this whole... You're asking the proper questions.
No, no, totally fine. Totally appropriate question.
The thing was to get a catalog from...
The money's out there.
That's right.
I can't envision why it wouldn't be ordered. Yeah, for sure. I don't see a reason why not.
Maybe, and you need to give some direction.
Yeah, and that's what I do, follow up on and understand a little better. But no, there's no logistical reason I can think of why it wouldn't be done.
Because we make plans, and sometimes they don't get done, sometimes they do. I know you're on top.
No, no, good question. That's, you're the overseer of this thing. That's the right question. So as far as these other topics, so I do want to start planning your planning session. Do you want to start preparing for your planning session? There we go. And so, like I said, I have thrown a number of things out there, as you see in your background. They won't all make, you can't hit them all in a day, for sure. But there's other things that aren't on here. What I've done in the years past, I've been doing it for years, since you were just elected, if I recall, but you, others might remember, the year before, I sent out a survey and said, "You've come up with 19 things that you want. Please prioritize your topic, because we just can't talk about them all in one session, and then we'll take away the rest, right?" That may happen again. It's totally appropriate. It doesn't bother me.
Counselor Bankery has something he wanted to throw in here real quick.
Maybe, maybe in our planning session, Jeff, we should come up with some, like I suggested at the meeting, the deer, you know, the questions and stuff like that, for how we're going to cap our deer problem.
Is that something you want to tackle earlier than the planning session?
Well, I hate to see us take up a council meeting, you know, an hour into council meeting, to deal with deer.
You exert comment?
I mean, it's a little off-topic from where we are, but the best way to deal with all that thing is to try to put a team together that will start to look at the problem, to allow us not to take all the time of council to do with that, but to be more focused as a group. And we understand it takes quite a few people, not only from council, from the town, but you need experts in a matter too. So you need to have a team that you need to put together. That is something, I think, the two things that we should agree upon. You want to have a team to look at, at that issue. And I think that's all right. That would be my recommendation. I don't know what you think.
Okay, any thoughts on that? Comments?
I can have it on your agenda next week. I told Greg what I'd do, is kind of mock up a bit of an agenda, and then we could bring it back here, and then set a time for meeting on that one.
Counselor Drew?
I think residents of Cardston, the ones that I talked to about the deer issue, they want to know, well, first of all, what's the town going to do? But then I think they also want some information about what they can do, right? And how they can deter the deer from their gardens, or their, you know, that kind of stuff. And I think that's the main, I want to call it the main squeeze that I've had on me, is that, hey, first of all, what are you going to do? But then we also want to know from some experts, how do we deal with this and deter the deer from there?
Could you have a new bylaw enforcement officer? Could he not spearhead this thing and look into it? Has he got time to do stuff like that? You being the guy that I would...
But I also think it's important that, like any of the communities that we sit on, that we have people...
That would be able to be contacted from council.
Yeah, for sure, but that it also takes up the residents. So the residents, not only are they coming in finding out what we're doing about it, but they are realizing that they have a say, because I was quite irritated to hear that we've had one complaint in 2018, three complaints in 2017, because I was one of them. I called. So, really, I was the only person...
Were you the only one?
I was the only person that called. Like, that was mind-blowing to me.
Well, they called the counselors, but we need to pass that on, I guess.
But that's just it. We don't know how to handle these things until we have the tools. Oh, we can call.
That's why I mentioned, I have calls from all the, "Hey, you breach this up."
Yeah, exactly.
Please go to the voicemail, if you don't check this machine.
I think that's valid and important, so that people, residents...
They need to contact them.
Well, and if they sit on this ad hoc committee, so to speak, I believe that you're talking about, that gives them power. That shows them that we are trying, and we are doing everything we can to look ahead to the next five-year plan on our deer.
Counselor Bankery?
Maybe one item we need to look at is our BMS helicopter landing area.
Yeah.
Have you come to the...
I've asked them to give me some dates to meet up with them.
I know we might want to put out there on our webpage, or our Facebook page, whatever, that we have had a visit with Mr. Hale, and then we would invite some ideas from the public as to what they feel could be some deterrents. We know that we can't go and shoot them. There's just no way. We just can't do that, right? You can't poison them, and we don't want to. But there are things that the public could do. Now, you know, I've been up to Waterloo a couple times, and they've done something up there that I think is a deterrent, but it doesn't look nice. There's all those fences that they've got, all along, all their new trees. I mean, they don't look nice. They're not appealing. But they're definitely doing the job. They're protecting those trees and those bushes that have just been planted.
All harbors were so that stuff.
You know, so there's other things. And I said it before, you know, when I built the fence around my yard, so they don't come in, and they don't. And that, it was an expensive fix for me. But we got to engage the public. We need to put it out there and ask them what they feel could be something that we could discuss.
Let me throw this out for next Tuesday. I think I could have ready mock agenda, a public engagement approach, and a committee structure proposal. Perfect. Does that work? Bring it back on Tuesday, we can set that and move on.
All right, sounds good. All right, moving on to the next item then.
I just wanted, sorry, Mr. Trump. If you have anything to come up where you're like, you know, we really, I'd really like to see us at our planning session, or really like, just send me an email. Shoot me a quick email. I have a feeling probably in the next month, I'll send you out a survey for prioritizing, just so I have a real good feel for where everyone's at with it.
But one other question, I guess, and I'm just trying to figure out where we're going to be staying for this red deer AOMA.
So we're at the Radisson.
We're on the way at the north end, so we're going to have to bus back or shuttle, or whatever. Were they just booked up that fast?
Yeah, forgetting the hotel, and then finding one that we could get a meeting room into. And the Radisson, we knew was a fairly safe bet to be, nice. And so, yeah, we are a little further on. They do have the shuttle there. And a few of us will have vehicles too. There's lots of parking at the convention center, so I think that should be... I'm hoping, I'm hoping we get around, okay? I'm not convinced. Well, we know that this AOMA, the locale and obvious convenience category, you know, but the costs are going to be way up too. You know, we're paying half per night per person, hotels even, you know, so that's going to help a lot.
All right, then, Rotary Golf Tournament. We've, we've in the past entered a team for the town. I don't know how many are golfers here that would like to be involved in that. I know Alex definitely.
Don't put ideas in his head.
But anyway, I won't be golfing.
Well...
Go ahead, Mayor.
Why don't we allow Jeff and his team to kind of...
Last year it was me and Jill and Dawn Weston and...
I think if...
The counselor, Counselor Barfus.
Yeah, I think it was Counselor Barfus.
We didn't do very well.
We need four more.
But I think if...
I won't be there, actually. I can't attend. I'm not here that day. But we, when the Rotaryians have been raising funds for town initiatives, we have supported that in some fashion.
So I think, I think you need your recommendation to have a...
Yeah, it'd be a recommendation to council.
So...
Mayor?
I would put your recommendation to council that we approve one team for the Rotary Golf Tournament.
Gold, so...
The council corresponds.
Yeah, and sell all our sponsorship if you have a team, so much money.
What's the cost?
Five fifty.
All right, we have a recommendation. All in favor? Okay?
It should come out of the donations.
Counselor Brown has the next item. Communities in Bloom, so I'll turn that over to you, Counselor Brown, to discuss.
So, I have a beautiful mock-up. I'll just have you put it up right in front of you, so everyone can see it. Seems funny to be talking about this, and we've got Brother Creed just sitting right here, because that's his mock-up, but I will do my best. I will do my best. Okay, so each of you in front of you has a sheet, and it is the E.J. Wood Memorial. Sorry, this is on behalf of Communities in Bloom. They requested that we bring this forward. And so, essentially, we went and we looked at all the parks in Kerdston, and we tried to find an area that we felt could be a bench. They wanted to put a bench, and they really wanted to recognize E.J. Wood. And so, they kind of talked amongst themselves and kind of came up with this idea. And so they're looking at putting this at Sunset Park. That seemed to be a good area, where we felt it was safe, it wouldn't get destroyed, and we've kind of decided the area of the park, sort of. So Bill Creed went ahead, and this is all him. He's gotten all the write-up on the costs and everything that's in front of you. You can see how big it is. You can see what it entails. Essentially, roughly, we're looking at $8,274.97 in regards to something along this. So it's my understanding, the bench, so the bench is marble.
Granite?
Granite, also known as granite. It's granite. We have the flower bases on either side it that are self-watering. And behind it, that, it's not life-size or anything, don't get me wrong. It's going to be iron, is my understanding?
Yeah, it's ironwork.
It's an ironwork behind it of the temple. So, anyway, we just thought we'd bring it to Cardston. Yes, there's a plaque in the middle, and you'll see that down here under the plaque cost. Sorry?
And are you ready for questions yet, or are you...
For sure.
Counselor Bankery?
Communities in Bloom have a $17,000 budget, is that correct?
They wish.
I was going to say, no, definitely not.
I think they got $3,000.
Thank you. Yeah, $3,000 bucks.
Yeah, that's... We have a little projects budget. I believe Communities in Bloom has $3,000, and then there's... We have like some miscellaneous beautification projects for Applegram.
Yeah, that's right.
But that would deplete everything immediately.
Plus.
Well, yeah, plus we're short $3,400, $3,200.
Town of York, town beautification, flower baskets $5,000, Boulevard Tree Program $1,000, Main Street Trees $2,900, Communities in Bloom $3,500, Project $1,500, Winter Lights Programs $12,000, and Street Banners and Harvard $26,000. It comes under Town Beautification for $17,700.
Correct. So yes, in that GL, correct? That isn't under the discretion of the committee, though?
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Yeah.
We need to have a say on it.
I mean, Communities in Bloom per se gets in their budget $3,500.
So where would this $8,000 come from then?
My other question, is there fundraising involved?
Can I comment?
Mr. Creed might have a...
Sorry?
No, for sure.
Yeah. So our intent in bringing this to council wasn't to ask, you know, the town to fund it. We anticipated that we would do fundraising through the community, and then perhaps contact the members of the Wood family, descendants of E.J. Wood, try to raise money privately. The main presentation that Counselor Brown is asking for the town is approval in principle for a space in town, a location where this can be, where this could be displayed to recognize the contribution of the E.J. Wood community.
I have a comment on the location. Personally, I don't like it. I think it's way out of the way. I would thought if you're going to honor somebody, that you would want everybody, as much as possible, tourists, et cetera, to be able to see it. There's not a tourist coming into this town that's going to know a thing about Sunset Park. And the other thought that I had was, we still have the site across from the high school, the E.J. Wood School Site. That's not moving forward. The shape of the project is defunct. It's not happening. And so we still have that property. Now, the question I have, that is a caveat to that, is have we got title to that land yet?
Yes.
There you go.
There was a strip that the school division, it was an odd strip, that the school division had that went through there, and it took a long time for that. For some reason, the land titles, it was years. But from my understanding, I will confirm for sure, but I'm relatively confident in saying that the entire title sits under the town now.
Personally, I'd like to see it there. That's my view, Counselor Bankery.
Have we, have we come and tagged the temple and seen that there's an area, like around the greenhouses where all the trees are and stuff like that, for this particular thing?
That's a good idea, too.
Because really, society's got their bench up there and their plaque on the one corner. There's a bench on the south side. But I'm just wondering if around the old greenhouse and stuff like that, would that be...
A comment, I talked to Lynn Rosenwald. He was involved with the Daughters of Utah pioneers on the north...
Corner?
East corner. And his comment was that the church is very reticent to add anything. They took them three years to get approval for that, and that was only because the tabernacle had been there.
Right.
I mean, it's something, I guess, it could be done, they could be contacted. But he didn't give me much hope that the church would consider putting something like that for, you know, the temple.
Well, I would suggest we ask them. All they can say is no. But when you consider that E.J. Wood was one of the primary candidates that worked on that temple, the construction of that temple, they might look at it very favorably.
But we do have that site very close to the temple, Counselor Brown.
So what I can tell you is, at the time we met, we did not have the land title. So that, that was off, because I asked you about it, and you said the money was still down, and you couldn't even look at it.
Oh, yes, sorry, not with the school division, but after that? Yeah, I think that's all tied up and dead now, yes.
Okay, so we didn't even, that was brought up, but it was shot down because...
Yeah.
Yeah.
In theory, essentially, I think the Communities in Bloom would like to know that council would be on board. Yeah, to support this idea, the idea of this. And yes, we were willing to, as Communities in Bloom, to fundraise for this. And now we have a different area, well, that's a possibility as well. But I think it boils down to, does this council support an idea of doing a memorial to E.J. Wood here in Kerdston in one of our areas?
Well, let's find out. We're on the table. Mayor?
How would you vote then?
Counselor Drew? Counselor Bankery? Counselor Brown?
Mother George?
And I am too, so there you go. Well, it's church property again. Counselor Brown, Counselor Bankery just mentioned a site that may be considered the Temple Street Chapel property there, too, for something like that.
That's Red Cross, right?
They might be more willing to allow that, as opposed to the temple property. And that might be something to look at.
For sure. Can we just ask, was there anything else that you would like to ask council?
No, I think it's been well discussed. I think we have, I'm hearing that we have approval in principle for council.
Do we need, we need a motion to have that, or what do you think?
No, not now.
You could make a recommendation. If you could do, but you could maybe try and formalize a site and have a motion on that.
Agreed.
So right now, yep, let's go ahead with it. Let's pick a site, and then let's make a motion to designate a site when it's determined.
When it comes. But in principle, we're in favor of the project.
Because I don't know if everyone's on the same page with the exact location, but in principle, I think everyone feels it's a good thing.
Well, would it...
Go ahead.
Sorry, would it be fair to give this back to Communities in Bloom and give them the go-ahead to confirm a site now that we have a little more information?
Do we need to have a motion to approve it in principle? That's the question.
Sure can.
Okay, let's have that.
Yeah, it's going to come back next week again.
Okay, so it's a recommendation.
Yep.
So I make that recommendation. We'll make it official next week. You make that? Counselor Drew made that recommendation? Approve it in principle? Okay, all in favor? Good, there you go. All right, I love to get... I'm taking them home. Put it on my mantle. Isn't that nice?
You're going to see flowers there.
Whoop, got the flower right there.
I know, I've got it.
Okay, so we have some business arriving from the delegations. Anything to discuss? Okay, so we have some business arising from the delegations. Anything to discuss on the mayor's council, the council? Go ahead.
When you talk about this letter to the, to the high school group, you know...
Is that each receive an individual letter?
Could, could, could they receive a plaque like we did for the council members out of the council?
What we will do, we will, we will give them a certificate of participation.
And have them at the council so we can take official stuff with them.
How can you get them out?
You know, at this time, it's very difficult. You could see there is quite a lot of groups.
They're busy.
But two of them, there was already a lot.
I'm just suggesting that I'd like to see the real nice certificate.
Well, that's what we're working on. This is what we discussed with today, so.
Any more discussion on the presentation from Mr. Hale?
Like I said, I'll bring you back some stuff on Tuesday.
Okay, so move on to, how about Mr. Tolly and Tolman's presentation at this time?
We've discussed it quite...
My...
Go ahead.
No. My, my only concern from a governance issue is that when we receive a delegation, it's very, very difficult to say as a chair that you have the support of all the members because you're not hundred percent sure of that until you really have discussed approach.
Yeah.
And so I would suggest that maybe we be a little bit more cautious with that, not sending, not sending the wrong vibes, the wrong message. But on a whole, is there merit on, on the project? There is merit, but there is, there are also in my mind some significant hurdle that we need to make sure we deal with before, before an approval. My, my greatest concern is surely the location, and because with a blood track, there, there are items on the front of the courts right now, and I would want that to be another...
Issue.
Issue.
My, my question for you just administratively is, how do you wanna fight this off in context of everything else? So hypothetically, ideally, if they said, hey, we wanna have this discussion again next March, we need to have a planning, and we spend a day talking about everything in context. My concern is they would like to, they'd like a more expedited approach to it, which is fine. It's totally fine. I just wanna get some feedback on how we want to approach it collectively, because I'm not sure that we want, or that they want you just to sit on this until the end of September, because really, it's a twenty-eight, twenty-four, it's the end of the month.
Well, that's...
Or maybe that's the only option, but game for anything.
My, my question is, is the budget timing, it's a little bit the same story as a spring park.
Yeah.
It was the same kind of conundrum we, we faced. It fell off the budget timeframe, and therefore, it became difficult to approve the project because the funding was non-existent.
Yeah.
And that, the same way I have with this project, because there is not a line in our budget to say four hundred thousand dollar or four hundred fifty thousand dollar has been allocated for phase one.
Well, remember, there's no point starting phase one unless we're seeing it through.
And, and it's exactly what I mean. And can we, can we move along without, without having a little bit more of a sense how it's affecting the politics of the day?
Councillor Drew?
I also think, I realize that they're business, and this is what they want to do, but we're talking about four point three, no, I think we're talking about a lot more than that, but we're talking about...
Four point five million, at least.
And I don't want to be rushed into saying, okay, we need to start this in July. I think we need some time to digest and think, and even put our feelers out there to the community and say, what do you, what do you think about this? I'd like some feedback before I make a four or five million dollar decision.
That is a lot what Elsberg is doing when they have large, large project that are planned, that bring the community together and give them a sense of what it would look like, and try to get input.
Have an information session or something along that.
Any other comments following your campaign?
Yeah, I, I know we're going to function without a full council, but this is an item that comes under councillor Self's situation, and I'd like to have him present, because he can talk about borders and crossings and stuff like that. I think, I think it's imperative that we include councillor Self in a discussion.
So Jeff, you were gonna put this on the agenda for next week?
Well, I can. My follow-up was gonna be, when do you wanna see this back and what's supporting it? So I have some thoughts, but I don't wanna interfere with this discussion. I'm happy to take up the tail end of it unless we're there.
So, okay, so any other comments, councillor Cor?
That's why I mentioned, we're, I'm almost thinking a special council meeting to deal with a couple of these big budget items. Instead of taking up an hour of regular council time, it is going to...
Just have a meeting for the presentations.
Yeah, presentation. At the time we asked, so that would be my thought. I don't know when you'd wanna have it, but...
You only meet once in July and August, so there's some time there. You also have a third Tuesday in June, the nineteenth.
Personally, I would prefer to send that.
I would, yeah, I think so, too.
We don't have a CCW in July, so hypothetically, on the third, we can meet, have a committee meeting in July?
Yeah.
We could cancel that because it's summer, but we could host a committee meeting in July.
I would prefer that.
That'd be the third, so it's a month out.
The third of July.
Yeah.
But that's fine.
So the second is a halt, no, yeah, the second is a halt.
Or are you saying the third Tuesday, the nineteenth?
Or you go the nineteenth of June.
So councillor Vaney?
I'll make a recommendation that we, we hold a committee meeting. Sooner the better.
You mean the third Tuesday?
Well, you know, that would be okay. Whatever, whatever, it'll make it work.
Let's go July.
July third?
Yeah.
Is anyone away for that week, though? Are you at a young women's camp by then?
I am every day for seven days, but I have people, so I will be here.
I'm gonna be leaving on the fourth of July, or no?
Just a lot of people are gone between first and fourth, because there's a halt.
That's why I was leaning toward the June meeting.
The only trouble is, they're trying to go and get an audience with chief and council, and I might not get it before the end of the month. It's no difference. We can start...
That's still discussing.
Yes. But we still can get started.
Yeah, I don't think we have to wait for that.
Let's go June nineteenth. My recommendation is June.
June the nineteenth.
Yeah.
Well, we, we go at five.
Should be done.
This is the one item agenda, right? I wouldn't be bringing other items this agenda.
We're just gonna discuss this.
Yeah.
Well, what about the other...
Context with the other projects.
We're talking two big budget items here. Is your center this one?
Yeah.
You might wanna just kick those two around.
But we could do, we should be able to do it in two hours.
So my recommendation is June nineteenth for both sides, recreation and wildlife.
Earth.
Get the wildlife.
The recreation, the recreation.
I mean, it's a wildlife, the mammals, food, grape.
So, okay, councillor?
Yeah. Just a thought, just throwing this out there, but what would be so wrong with, like, I understand, we are meeting on the tenth of July, but if in fact we, I would like to hear what council, chief and council think of this. And so I think we should give them time to go meet with chief and council, and what would be wrong with us having that on the seventeenth of July? So then, then we know...
No, that's too late.
I'm just throwing this out there.
Historically, historically, they gotta meet with the council before the end of June.
I know.
Historically.
I know, so that would be the twen, that would be the eighteenth to the twenty-fifth. Right?
I don't know how often they meet.
I thought it was every Monday.
Is it every Monday?
Well, that would be the eighteenth to the twenty-fifth, which is what I'm looking at.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean, if they're given or not.
Correct, correct, correct.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the thing. I think we still need to discuss it with the understanding that they may or not, may or may not be in supportive of the whole idea, and if they're not, then where do we go from there, right? I mean, I don't know that this project gets stopped.
It's not that we need that. Anyway, it's not...
No, no, go ahead, say what you're saying.
No, it's, it's quite complicated. It's maybe that's...
Well, maybe you talk about it at the meeting, huh?
Yeah.
So what, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna go on the nineteenth of June, or... Let's have a vote here.
Well, you have a motion, you have a motion on Saturday.
Okay, we have a motion. It's a recommendation, it's a recommendation, okay? All in favor of the recommendation to meet on the nineteenth of June?
Five o'clock.
At five o'clock to discuss the rec center and the...
Kerston Trail.
Trail.
Trail proposal.
Yes.
All in favor? Carrie, any votes?
Do you want Mr. Tolly or Tolman there? My first reaction is no.
I don't think so.
But I mean, they can't come, it's a public meeting, and they would respect that we want it to not happen.
Yeah, no, I think we need to discuss it.
But...
Okay. Okay.
Okay, we'll set, we'll advertise for that extra meeting.
Okay, June nineteenth, special meeting.
Can I just ask?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
At the first presentation that was made, there was regarding the finances, the idea that there were philanthropists that were able to be interested in projects like that. I haven't heard no, no word about philanthropists this time around. I would like maybe that clarified, is it still something that can be looked at? It was Mr. Grant Tolly who was, who spoke about that, and that he knew a fair amount of those people involved with the other project reporters.
He also talked about grants, in which there was one in there.
There were two of them.
Okay, moving on to number eight questions.
No, we, we covered that.
Okay, we covered that. Okay, so we have our correspondence, we do, we've got the Albert Recreation Parks and Recreation notice here. I guess that's the Energize Workshop. They wanted to know if we were going to recommend somebody to honor from our community. Any thoughts on that? Can you think of anything that, that we need to do with that? Mayor, did you read it over and add any thoughts on that?
I already...
I, I don't know. Just for the sake of having somebody, I don't think we should do that.
I already couldn't think of...
I couldn't either.
I think we should do that on our decision, make that decision.
Well, I don't really think it's, it's even that. Do we even have in mind?
I, I haven't had any myself.
At this point, I already...
All right, and we'll move on to that. So FYI, Kerston County, letter of support for the twenty-four hour border crossing, they're, they're supportive of the initiative. That's great. Next is the Trans Mountain Pipeline issue. It's a letter from President Barry Morashida of the AUMA. What are we gonna do with that?
Okay, the last mayor's and we, the, the direction that seemed to be given from AUMA to mayor's and we is for each community to write a letter in support of the Trans Mountain Pipeline. And if, if we are in favor of doing that as being an important economic driver, then maybe, maybe it needs to be done, but I don't know. Yeah, but, yeah, but let, let me find out.
Let's discuss it first.
There's one thing, and I don't know how this affects it with the environment around Trans Mountain changed dramatically since we moved the...
I would say so. I would say so.
Right, so I don't know.
So do we want to be put in memory or not? So that's another story.
Yeah, now that the taxpayer owns it, I'm not really sure what the political wheel behind it is right now.
I, I have no idea. I don't.
Well, I've been following that, that news item quite a bit.
I mean, it does...
There's been a lot of, the protests against it are stepping up, because they feel now that the government's gonna pressure and put it, and drive it through. There's been a lot of, of people in support of it that are not happy at all that the government got involved and committed to spend four point five million dollars, but they still want it to go through.
Billion.
They want it to be built.
Billion, yeah.
Yeah, billion, not million, billions. My personal opinion is, I wanna see it go through. I'm not happy either that they're spending our money, but...
But also...
Economically, it should be really great for Alberta if it does happen.
I mean, AUMA advocates for all the municipalities already.
Yep.
So that's already done. But with attention to political thing, I am with that. It's a little bit of a hot potato.
Councillor Drew had a comment for...
No, I was just thinking that, I watched the program, and they were talking about those who oppose and those who support.
Yeah.
And they did a poll in DC, and most, most of the people who are opposing, they're a really small group.
Yeah.
And everybody else in DC are...
They're overwhelming and supporting the project.
I don't think much.
But there are many First Nation groups that are very much in favor, and but there is...
There's forty, at least forty First Nations that are in support of it.
But there's many that are against it.
So...
It's so ridiculous.
Councillor Vaney had the comment first.
I'm wondering if we should direct administration to go hold the AUMA president or CEO now and see if the opinion has changed, or if they're still getting...
Still their request?
Yeah.
Or it, yeah.
Councillor Cor?
I was just saying, the ridiculous is, the DC premier is suing us to allow oil and they're suing us to block oil.
Yeah, you know, there are one of both ways.
It's a coin.
I know. So is that the wish of council, then, to have administration check with AUMA and then report back to us next council meeting Tuesday?
Because I haven't seen anything in the AUMA.
I haven't either.
It's had to become very...
I'll work for you.
Sure.
Okay, all right, well, then we'll do that. And then, let's see, now there's just another item here, just to let us know that there's a new CEO for AUMA. He's been on the board, I think he, Dan's been the interim anyway, wasn't he?
Yeah.
So it's now it's ratified that he's going to be, so that's it.
I think a lot of questions.
All right. Got that in there quick.